Hello and welcome to the Kosh. I am your host Timber Smith and the Kosh is a podcast that spotlights people who have had an association with Oshkosh or the surrounding Fox Cities area. How's everyone doing this week? Super excited to be here. We're doing a different day this week, you know, if you really listen to the Kosh, you know, I usually try to record these things early on a Saturday morning. Why? Because morning energy, weekend morning energy is fantastic. So people come in, they're ready. And it makes for an amazing show and a great conversation. And today we're just scooting over a day. So we're going to try this on a Sunday morning and we're going to see if it still holds the same energy. As you know, and I think you know what I'm about to say, I once again have an amazing, amazing guest. I don't know why I get so lucky. But I do, and I continue to get just these cool, cool guests. So without further ado, this week's guest is Liz Salaji. Liz, did I say that right?
You did.
Oh my God, I did not slaughter the name this week. Rack one up for Timber. How are you feeling?
I'm feeling good. This is exciting.
Yeah, I think so too. It's a, it's just a fun thing, right?
It is.
All right, cool. Without further ado, we should probably just jump in. You ready to jump in?
Let's do it.
Let's do it. All right. So Liz, could you please share a little something about yourself and what's your connection to the Kosh?
Yeah. So my connection to the Kosh is that I am currently serving my first term on the school board. Some things about myself, for 11 years now, I have been a stay at home mom to four kids. So my oldest is 11. I left my career as a teacher when he was born and then I have, that's a boy, I have three girls after that.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Whoa.
And they're all close. Listen to these ages, 11, nine, seven, and five. They're all fall birthdays. So it just was like every two years.
Oh man, you, yeah, you're getting your butt kicked. Don't front either. That's just what's happening.
Right? So there's no point in holding on to a career. Those childcare costs would have been more than my salary probably. But I've loved staying at home. I really needed adult connection though and educational stimulation. So that's where I started getting involved in local politics and decided to run for the school board. And so that's where I'm at now. I'm up for reelection this spring. Some other things about myself. I am a grad student at the U W O professional counseling program or department. So shout out to them. It's been a great experience. This is my first year in the program. I will be a school counselor when I graduate.
Hey. We need them.
Yes, very important for our students. So those are just a few things about me and what I do here in Oshkosh.
Okay, where are you originally from?
So I am originally from a really small town in central Utah.
Oh, okay. Break that down. Wait, wait. When you say small, like I need a description of how small is small because you know, Wisconsin's small means that there's only a stop sign in one road. So how small are we talking?
So the, the main street has one stoplight. They don't really need it. But it's there. So and here's the funny thing. When I would bring people, you know, when I was at college and I'd bring people to my small town, I'd always tell them I'm from Delta, Utah. And then we drive through Delta and we keep going for like seven miles out into the country. And they're like, you're not even from Delta. I'm really from a place called Sutherland, Utah, which has a population of about 300 people.
Whoa.
Yeah.
That's different.
No gas stations, no grocery stores. That's why I'd say I'm from Delta because we'd have to go to school in Delta, shopping in Delta, everything in Delta.
Okay.
And Delta's like barely 3,000.
So people might actually know Delta, but if you said southern, then no one's, they're like, no one knows that.
No. So when they'd ask me about, you know, you lied about where you're from, I'm like, no. You would have never ever heard of Sutherland, Utah. So I just said Delta.
How'd you make your way to Wisconsin?
Yeah. So that's a good question. Um, I met my husband at university out in Utah. He is from just across the border in Illinois.
Okay.
Close to Beloit though. Like he's literally just a couple of hours across the border.
Got it.
So we met out in Utah. We, after graduation, moved to Washington DC area for him to attend law school. And that's where I was a teacher, was in Washington DC. And he always really liked the Midwest. He liked Wisconsin better than Illinois, even though that's where he was from.
Right.
You know, when you're in northern Illinois and you live that close to Wisconsin, yeah, you kind of favor Wisconsin. So
This is true.
He took the bar in Wisconsin and applied to be a state public defender. He was offered a job and he could choose between like Oshkosh, Green Bay. I can't remember the others now. And we actually just went to Wikipedia. Summary about all of them. And we were like, we like Oshkosh the best. That one sounds the best.
Oh my God, I love that. So Wikipedia.
Yep.
That's the way.
That's the way we chose out of four places in Wisconsin.
Facts. That's so cool and so many different ways. So have you, was it the right choice?
It was. I have loved raising our kids here. So yeah, all our kids have been, all our daughters have been born here. Our son was like two months old when we made the move. He jokes that like, I'm from Virginia. I'm like, no, read you. You're from Wisconsin. You lived your whole life here.
He's trying to claim other states. I love it.
Just because you were born there doesn't mean much when you grew up in Wisconsin. But we've loved it. It's been a really good place to raise our kids. It's really affordable compared to both Utah and Virginia and just lots of good resources for families, you know, parks, libraries, I could go on and on. We'll get to that in some of this other stuff.
This is true. This is true. And, and you know, you, I don't know if this was in the Wikipedia, but like the, the Fox Cities region is like, I believe, and at least it used to be, maybe not anymore, but the most resource rich area in Wisconsin. And you, that's true. You can feel it. There's options. There's opportunities for people. So I mean, if you need to come here and build, this is a really good place to come and build from.
Yep. Yeah. And that's what we've done. I know I hear people talk about brain drain and I'm sure people feel that, but I often think, well, my husband are higher examples of like a brain gain, right?
Yeah.
We chose Oshkosh to be the place where we'd raise our family.
Brain gain. I think you just coined that. That's a thing now. We're going to use that. We've got to keep that. Should we get T-shirts?
Yeah.
Facts. All right. Well, let's, first segment, first segment is what in the world is going on with? This is where you start with the phrase, what in the world is going on? And then you tell us what's on your mind.
Yeah. So what I've been following is the figure skating Olympics. Everything from the Russian skater who didn't quite pass the drug test, but they still let her compete. And then also the coaches, you know, being really almost abusive to skaters that are just 15 years old when they fell on the ice. And it's just interesting to watch the whole dynamics. You know, as a kid, you just watch the figure skating and don't ever pay attention to those behind the scenes things.
Right.
So now I'm getting that as adult where I'm following all these backstories.
Well, Russia has a reputation.
Yeah, it does. So the whole thing from the onset has been really interesting and I'm surprised it just keeps building.
So did you think they made the right decision?
My understanding is they made that decision because she's so young. They felt like, maybe I should have read up more about this. That she wasn't fully responsible for the doping. But I don't think it's fair to the other athletes. You know, I've seen about the Olympic runner that didn't get to compete because this was an American runner. I'm going to say her name wrong because I can see the words, but I would mispronounce it. But she didn't get to compete because she was found to have some marijuana in her system.
Yep. And, and that was because I don't remember the family member that died. I want to say, and it was an aunt or her grandmother died. And yeah, she, that was her way to cope.
Yeah.
I, my thing on this is like, I totally feel horrible for this young lady because she's 15 A. And B, I don't believe that she, if she did take anything, I don't think she was aware.
Right.
I think, you know, because I don't think they're in control of that situation for that particular country, right? And so, yeah, but I still have to say, I think the rules should be followed. And I hate that the young girl is punished for that. But the country that did that to her, her coaches that did that to her theoretically are the ones who should be punished.
Yeah.
And I, I just think, once you make exceptions, then you, you have to start making exceptions for everyone. And that's the, that's the problem with exceptions.
Right?
Right? And so that's, that's it. Like I feel horrible for the young lady. I by no means think that this is her fault. I hate seeing her get punished, but I also hate the concept of opening the door to exceptions for something like the Olympics.
Right? Because what message does that send to other coaches in other countries that, hey, if our players don't know, they're young. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and once you open that door, you know, how do you make exception? You know, like I felt some kind of way about them banning the young lady that you're talking about as far as the track. Just because I don't think marijuana is an enhancing drug. Somehow I don't think marijuana is going to make you run faster. Not quite sure why marijuana is on the ban list, but I mean, that was the rule and they upheld the rule there. I just think if you're going to uphold the rule, uphold the rule. Even though it really sucks, you have to do that to somebody that's 15 and that is probably not really cheap. Not her fault. Might not have even known, probably definitely didn't know. I'm going to go like 95%.
Right?
So.
Yeah, she's, it's hard to hold kids essentially responsible for the poor choices of adults. But you see then how the, you know, they treat some of their other skaters and those kids are bearing a burden for those adults. Man, this was kind of a heavy thing to bring up. I don't know, but that's, that's what I keep seeing and I just find it really interesting.
Heavy but appropriate because I do think that's worth saying, what in the world is going on with that?
Yeah.
So I think that's fair. My what in the world is going on with is what in the world is going on with the winter squall? Seriously, like I just, I still use the term polar vortex. Do we remember the polar vortex out there, Kosh listeners? Do you remember that?
Yes, I do remember that.
Like that was some different kind of cold. That was cold where it stung. Like you walked outside and your skin literally shriveled and it stung.
Yeah. And it got into our house, like by the door, there was ice on the inside. Yeah.
And like, that was the only time I ever remember Wisconsin where literally from the state level, they shut things down. Because the state, look, your organization may shut things down and other things may shut down, but usually the state itself at the state level does not shut things down. The polar vortex shut things down.
Yeah.
This squall, and this is new word to me, was crazy. I took Bosco, the podcast dog out for a walk in the squall. And let me tell you, you know, it, it was like a winter hurricane.
Yeah.
It was bongers.
It was sideways snow, but it was different from a blizzard. Saying, I would be surprised if there's anyone who knew what a squall was before that little message on our phone. But I was like, why aren't they just calling it a blizzard? But after experiencing it, I'm like, oh yeah, this is different than a blizzard.
Yeah, I, I think it's smaller. Maybe the squall is like not quite up to being a blizzard. Like it's the mini version.
It was like less than an inch of snow. It wasn't that much snow, but it was just going everywhere.
Oh, and that wind was horrible. So here's my thing. Let me talk to you, Wisconsin weather. Don't do that to us no more. I don't want to learn any more new terms. I don't need to learn about any more winter whatevers. No squalls, no polar vortexes and anything else. I don't know. Can we kind of just keep it to the language that we know at this point in time? I don't need no new winter definitions or lingo. That's just how I'm feeling about that. Did you go out in that at all, Liz?
I was out. My daughter was ice skating at Row Park with her Girl Scout troop.
What?
Yeah, but not, so we were out driving home when it happened. We were all there though, when our phones started buzzing. We were all like, what's a squall? What, what is this?
The Girl Scout troop out there in the squall handling things.
Most of them probably were still in it. We left a little early and so we drove in it for like only half a mile, but you couldn't see anything.
Yeah, you couldn't, look, I'm not going to lie. We ordered a pizza that night before the squall came into play. But the pizza took a minute because of squall and I felt bad. Like I really didn't want my pizza driver out there and look, that's a bad sign when weather is so bad that you don't want your pizza.
Yeah, right?
Because I'm trying to look out. Yeah, facts. All right. Onto word associations. First word, food.
Yeah, I'm embarrassed to admit this, but I'll be honest. The first food that came to my mind was cold cereal. I mean, I thought I was over that at this age. I cook a lot of homemade meals and I love cooking comfort food soups, especially in the winter salads in the summer, grilling. But I just can't get cold cereal out of my heart.
Oh, for real? Is that like, is that like a go-to? Like, do you like have nights where you're just like, I'm just going to sit down here with some Frosted Flakes and just?
Yes. It started as a teenager and it was Frosted Flakes. They were my favorite.
Oh, I nailed it.
Yeah. I didn't want my parents to know I was snacking late at night. So I'd have my little bowl of Frosted Flakes. Quiet as I could.
There's nothing quiet about Frosted Flakes.
I'm sure they knew.
So what is the favorite cereal now?
Now, I really like Cracklin oat bran. I think that's what it's called. It's like the squares. My, some people think it looks like dog food, but it tastes really good. Special K with the yogurt nuggets in it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Whenever that's on sale, I buy like whatever the limit is to stock up for months on end.
Are you that girl?
You're at the age of my kids. I'm a couponer.
Okay, um, cocktail or beer?
I am really boring. I don't drink alcohol and I just drink water, basically.
Oh, wait, okay. Well, it's okay not to, you know, I'm not, here's what I will say. That's not boring. It's unique.
It is.
If we're Wisconsin, it's super unique. But okay then, if not that, do we dress up the water with anything?
No, that's why I like, I don't even do coffee or tea or anything. Like it's really just water. Occasionally I like some orange juice or apple juice.
Yeah.
But I don't like cold water. I don't like it with ice. I'm weird about.
Warm water. Or room, is it warm water or is it room temperature?
Cold out of the tap, but not like extra cold.
Okay. So no ice in the water?
No ice.
Okay. Do you, do, when you go to a restaurant, do you tell them that? Like, hey, just give me some water. No ice in my water?
I don't. I waitress stealth through college and I try to be really.
Low maintenance?
Low maintenance. Yeah, that's the word. But I always feel bad because I know once I say just water, they think I'm going to be like cheap or boring or something, but it's really just because that's my preference. It's just how I am. I don't know.
Is that what, well, as someone, I've never been a server. So let me ask you, since you have done surveying, is that what servers think?
Sometimes, yeah. I never did because I just like water, but I do know some servers, once someone just orders water, they think, oh, they're trying to keep their bill down. They're not going to tip me well. Yeah, I had coworkers that would think things like that.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. That kind of sucks because here's what I'm going to tell you. If I am ordering water, I am trying to keep my bill down, but it will not affect your tip. I will give you a decent tip regardless of my water choice, but I, and that's just part of me balancing the whole thing because sometimes I'm just not in the mood for a $2.50 soda that I'm going to only drink halfway. And yeah, that's just where it's at.
Yep.
All right. All right. That's good to know. I'm going to start doing that all the time. No, I'm just.
Let them know I want, I want water, but I'll still tip you well.
Yes. Streaming.
So I just like my go-tos, 30 Rock, Friends, Parks and Rec. I just, at the end of the long day, I need like 25 minutes of laughs.
Ooh, yes.
Yeah.
I, I can't argue with any of that. So have you made it all the way through all of those seasons of those particular?
Yes, I even own all the discs of Friends and I'm pretty sure I watched all of Parks and Rec like every week as it aired on NBC back, back in the day. And 30 Rock, I didn't join until a few seasons in, but yeah, I've definitely seen every episode of each of those. Once, maybe twice.
Okay, I can understand the, the wanting a good laugh thing. Like I, my show is Modern Family.
Yes, that's actually, I've never re-watched Modern Family though. Like I watched it all as it came out, but I've never gone back and re-watched it.
Oh, it's classic. Actually, when you go back and watch it, you're just like, oh my God.
Better?
It's even better because there's just things, like the way those characters were developed. Cam, Cam is probably one of my favorites. Those kids are awesome. And you know, Gloria, oh my God.
Yeah, and her and Jay's relationship, it's just like perfect.
Oh yeah. You know, no doubt. I can't quite get the Al Bundy out of Jay. Whenever I see him.
Few seasons, but I got there eventually.
Eventually I got there. You're right. And actually I like him better now as not as Al, but as Jay. He, that's a good character.
Yeah, it is.
All right.
Gosh, Phil might be one of my favorites though.
Oh, no doubt. Wait, Phil, Phil is the dad of the year. Like that's a dad dad. Cause he's crazy.
Yeah, they're all good. Those are good characters.
Shop local.
Um, so my favorites and it's like something nostalgic every year, especially around Christmas. I just have to go into Caramel Crisp and adventure games. Just shop around, get stocking stuffers for my kids. I like them all year round, but especially like Christmas time. I feel like those two stores just really drag me in.
All right. Definitely a huge shout out to the local gaming stores around here because we need them.
Right? I know there's another one that I need to check out. Well, there's a couple, but I, I do need to expand, go into some more because I love gaming, card gaming, board gaming, all of it.
And Caramel Crisp, what I will say about them is they got soup. They're good soup.
Yeah. I've tried a variety of their menu and it's never disappointing.
No, no. And it's a, it's a, you know what? That is truly what I would almost call an Oshkosh gym. Like if you don't know, know, that's a nice spot to go stop down into and just have a nice lunch with a friend. And it's just a really warm atmosphere.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. I like Caramel Crisp. That's a good one. Okay, pets.
Yeah. So in a perfect world, we'd have a family dog, but uh, with four kids, I just couldn't ever quite get to there. So we ended up with a turtle.
Oh my God. Turtle?
Yes. Actually shout out to the school counselor. That was, you know, when my son was going through a rough patch, I asked her to be with him and that was like her big takeaway. He's like, he really wants a pet turtle. So I was like, all right, finally do this. Yeah.
That sounds really low maintenance.
It is. And you know what stemmed from, we have window wells outside and there's always toads in them every summer and we go and save the toads. And we always pick one toad and keep it over the summer. And then we release it, you know, we, it's like our animal rehabilitation program, program. And it got harder and harder for him every year to release the toad. He can always keep. So then he thought a turtle and we were like, all right, let's do it. We got a turtle named Shelley.
Oh, Shelley. Shelley the turtle. Oh my God, that's so good. I can't believe that. That's good. Shelley. All right. Does Shelley like do things like?
You know, she actually does seem to have a little bit of personality. She moves the rocks around at the bottom of her tank. She has like a little island she can sunbathe on and the way she sunbathes, she like keeps her little claws in the water and has her legs or her arms all stretched out to have like the claws in the water, but everything else getting the light lamp, light from the lamp. Just little things that you never knew about a turtle. If you didn't spend hours and hours at a pond watching them, you know?
Oh my God. That's so good. Um, yeah, I, I don't know. I feel like I have many questions about Shelley the turtle. And then in my mind, I feel like somebody, particularly a turtle named Shelley should almost have like their shell painted. Like it should have like, I don't know, a sunflower on it or something. I don't know. That's probably not healthy or anything. Don't listen to Timber.
She doesn't like to be touched very much. Like we had to take her out to clean the tank. She kind of gets snippy. So I don't know that she'd let us paint her.
Oh, Shelley's not, Shelley's not about that business. Shelley's like, forget that. Let me be.
Yeah. She likes her tank. She'll come up to the glass and watch, especially my son. He like convinced that she recognizes him and knows him. It's pretty sweet.
Yeah, that might be true.
Yeah. He says he's researched it and that they, as they get more comfortable in their home, that they will do that.
How long has Shelley?
Yeah, we only got her in November, I think. It's kind of like an early Christmas present.
Do we know how old Shelley is?
We don't. They'll live about 25 years and the guy at the pet store told us that she was probably only five or so years old.
Oh, this is a long-term commitment.
He might be taking her to college with him. I don't know.
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
I like it. Education.
So when I think of education, I always think of just creating lifelong learners. When I was in my teacher prep program, that like it clicked to me that my whole purpose as a teacher would be to help kids learn how to just learn on their own, even after school. So that's what comes to mind for me.
Lifelong learners. That's true. I think we're all lifelong learners, just maybe not formally with curriculum.
Right?
Well, at least I hope we are.
Yeah.
I hope we don't become stagnant.
Yeah. And that's what I realized my goal as a teacher should be. I do have a curriculum that I had to get through. But like the real goal was that I would just help kids learn to love learning.
That's awesome. All right. And you are now formally in your own education program. What did it feel like to go back?
It was comforting to see that I was not the only non-traditional student. You know, I'm thinking like, okay, I'm almost 40 and I'm going to be there with a bunch of younger kids, but I shouldn't say kids, they're adults, a bunch of young adults. I actually did that once with one of my friends that's about 22. I was like, I'm sorry. I know you're an adult. And she laughed. She's like, oh, you can call me a kid still. But it doesn't feel like that gap, you know, the girls I do sit by the most in class usually are the younger ones, but there's also other moms. So it wasn't as daunting as I thought it would be, I guess, is how I would put that.
No, grad school's different. I do think there's like this unifying thing that happens in a grad school class where there's just this, all that whole hierarchy of age and all that, like it don't matter. Everybody's on the struggle bus.
Yep. Sure. Especially in a professional counseling program where we share a lot of our heart. Yeah.
Oh yeah, that's true because there is, there, there's a part of that where you have to truly understand yourself before you can be a counselor. And I, and I only know this because I've looked into the program and I've had good friends, very, very good friends who've gone through that. Shout out to my girl Shelley, or Sherry. I was thinking of Shelley. See how that works? Yeah, stuck on the turtle. So that, yeah, that is so true. Like they, they, you got to get into who you are before you can help others.
Yeah. And they designed the program that way. Like in the interview process, they talked about that. That's one of their goals. To make sure we work through our stuff before we go out into the professional world. So we all do that together.
And that was scared to mess out of me.
Yeah.
A little bit.
But we all know, we talked about this even just last week. We all know that we're all going to keep it, you know, private for each other because we're all doing it.
Well, that's part of being a counselor, right?
Yeah.
That's counseling 101.
Yeah, right?
You got to keep the secrets. Yeah, the gossiping counselor. That just doesn't sound very good. Okay. Next segment, Kosh hidden gems.
So I love the Weowash Trail. All, almost all the things that I thought of were actually outdoor things. I also really love the Sheldon Nature Center that's over. I actually live by there. So my kids and I can walk there. But I think one of my favorite parts of the Weowash Trail is the part right up by the Riverside Cemetery. And a funny story to go with that, when we were in the thick of the whole safer at home, the beginning of COVID, you know? And the weather was starting to warm up. I'm like, all right, kids, let's go out for a hike. And we got on the Weowash Trail and they asked, can we go to the cemetery? Now, my dad was a cemetery caretaker. It was like one of his summer jobs. Yeah.
I feel some kind of way about that. Like to me, that just feels different.
It is. So to a lot of people, they would be like, no, we're not going to go walk through the cemetery. But I was like, yeah, let's do it. And it was cool to see my kids, when you get to some of the bigger, oh, now I can't think of the words because they're not headstones. They're the big like pillars. And my kids are like, hey, Pollock, is that like Pollock Pool? Wait, this one says Sawyer. This one says Payne. And just seeing them connect the history of the place that they're from with the cemetery and the families that have made Oshkosh was cool.
Oh, that would be totally cool. I've never walked through there, but there's just something, you know, I'm not going to lie. I'm a little superstitious and walking through a cemetery was scared the jeebs out of me a little bit. I'm not about that life.
No, I know. Some people don't even want to do that in the daylight and I get it. But if you're comfortable with it, it can be really historically pleasing for you.
Yeah, no, I think that. Yeah, no, I think that would be really cool, I, you know, I don't know enough about that of Oshkosh. I've learned all sorts of things about Oshkosh, but I'd like to know is like, that one of the oldest cemeteries of Oshkosh, you know, to have those names. Those headstones associ- uh there and that association, like what is the historical context? Um, of that particular cemetery, um, is that like one of the first or, you know? Definitely one of, it seems like one of the bigger, uh, I don't, you know, big, big, probably.
Yeah, there's one that's like right across the street and then there's one just off forty-one on the south end of town, but yeah, Riverside does seem to be the largest of them.
It does seem to be the largest of them, okay, um, what does the Kosh need?
Alright, so I got, I wrote down a couple of things, um, you know, for the shop local, I was also thinking of places that I've taken my kids to celebrate their birthday parties, so like escape Oshkosh and fire escape.
Oh, I love them.
And I don't know if I'm just not creative enough, we've also done the YMCA, but those are like the only ones that I could ever think of to organize birthday parties. A lot of kids do their birthday parties up in Appleton at the trampoline parks, I guess we have precision athletics too, so there's a couple. But anyway, this is the long way of getting around the fact that I would love to have a trampoline park in Oshkosh, I don't get how Appleton has four and we have zero. Doesn't make sense.
Bruh, I agree, I think, I just think there's such good opportunity for us to create something for our youth, particularly that middle school and high school aged um, young people that we have around, cause I don't, to me, like Oshkosh, we just don't have a lot of options um, for them, but they're prevalent and they're a large population.
Yeah.
You know, and I just think, I'm actually surprised some business really hasn't taken advantage of, of that population. Um, because parents do want to keep their kids busy.
Yes, and burning off energy all, you know, our six months of winter.
Facts, like, you do need things to get them out of the house. I'm lucky enough that that is uh not where I am at anymore, uh shout out to all the other empty nesters out there.
You made it through.
Yes, you, there, look, let me tell you something, that when you get done with, with your four, you will also become part of that, that, that sacred group of empty nesters and you will celebrate.
Yeah, I believe it.
Oh yeah, I wanted to invite to that party.
Gosh, I still have like thirteen, fourteen more years of, before I get there though.
Oh, you're vested.
Yeah.
You got time.
Gosh, the other one though, and I live close to Lake Buttermore, and I would love to have a beach on Lake Buttermore, I don't even know that it's possible, I don't know that there's any land. But it would just be nice to be able to take my kids to the lake we're really close to, we love going, um, down to Winnebago and gosh, my brain just like neglected the whole park system there, Menominee. I mean, that's a great place, but it would be nice to have a little beach on Lake Buttermore.
Oh yeah, I think options, uh to have more, more than one of anything would be really cool and, yeah. Um, I don't know, like I, I haven't done a lot of hanging out uh around Buttermore except for like a little bit of fishing, you know, coming off the Fox River and rolling into there. But I, but it seems like a really cool opportunity, like there's things they could do there.
Yeah.
Like there's opportunities that, of things that they could build around.
Right, that's what I would love to see some investment in.
Okay, I think that's really, really good.
You can tell I have kids, right, trampoline park and a beach.
Um, and there's adults who want those things.
Right?
Look, I'm not gonna lie, if it wasn't for the fact, like if I was in my thirties, I'd be all about a trampoline park. Like, trampoline park seems like that would be a really cool date night, like.
Yeah.
Now, at the point when you hit the age when you can possibly break a hip or something, uh, yeah, uh, yeah, I'm not about that life anymore. I'm, I'm past that point now.
No need to hit that insurance deductible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna hurt nothing and I don't wanna long heal, so I just wanna survive, um, okay, um. Next segment, the naughty slash heroes corner, this is your opportunity to state somebody, something, an organization to celebrate or to place in the naughty corner, what would you, what do you think?
Yeah, so just as a teacher's heart, I would have to do our teachers, um, between the public schools and the private schools, that's a big group of people, but I can't even imagine having all the adjustments that they've had to have through covid. So I just say they are heroic for meeting the needs of our children.
Facts, um, I celebrate educators, um, we've celebrated educators quite a bit on this show. Um, I don't think people understand, um, the amount of work that has to go into like, to create lesson plans. And people don't understand it, like, you don't just create that on the fly, like, you've gotta hand that in way, way in advance. And sometimes like during covid day, or had to be multiple lessons plans, because you had to have an in-person and then you had to have a virtual.
Yeah.
Um, so you had to be ready and you had to be flexible and, and, yeah, there's things about it, like, I don't think and I don't think right now we are sh- still showing our educators the amount of respect that they deserve, um, for what they do. And, and my bigger problem is this, what I really don't like, I don't like people coming in trying to tell you how to do your job if you're not willing to go do that job. Like, I'm, I'm, I'm a firm believer, like coaching, I don't like rec league coaches where the parent tries to coach from the sideline, guess what? It's, you can volunteer and do that, it's free, just sign up and you could be that coach, I don't, you know, if, but if you ain't gonna do that, you don't need to, you, you need to be a good observer and, and a good supporter at that point, and that's how I feel about education. At any given time, you could step up and go get licensed.
Yeah.
You know, and, and actually, just so we can let those listeners out there know, they have brought down the licensing, um, what it takes to get licensed to be a teacher or a, a teacher, uh assistant. So if you got a bachelor's degree, you could do it, so if you feel that strongly about there, um, step up.
Yep, I totally agree with that, that's a whole other topic, how they've brought down those requirements.
Yeah.
But everyone goes through school, you know, even if you're homeschooled or schooled in a non-traditional way, you go through school. And so I think people have strong opinions about it without always realizing that the educators have degrees, um, and yours experience and a lot more than just an opinion.
So much more than an opinion, oh my god, yes, um, yeah, we could go deep on that one.
Yep.
But, um, due to the fact that your topic of the week is probably gonna, we'll probably touch on some stuff in that, we'll just.
Good segue.
You know, I think it's a good segue, so you know, what we will do is at this point. Yes, that is the topic of the week music that we have now founded, and no, I have not cut it down shorter because I don't know, I'm kinda feeling the buildup to it, so Liz, what is our topic of the week?
Yeah, our topic of the week is literacy.
Alright, let's jump in.
Hey, literacy is something I'm really passionate about, I was an English teacher, and so I taught middle school and high school English. And despite all the training and the degree that I got, I was surprised when I showed up in the classroom, I had some students. This was a tenth grade classroom who read below a second grade reading level, I had never been prepared to teach students that were reading at a second grade level, um, so that was my first wake-up call to this important topic of literacy and what we need to do to make sure that everyone can be literate. There are so many reasons this is so important, gosh, I could go on a bunch of tangents here, but one of them is when you look at prison populations, there's often a correlation, and that doesn't always mean causation, but it's still an interesting correlation between literacy and prison recit- recitatives, I can't say that word.
Recitis- recidivism? Yes, I think that's pronounced.
Yeah.
Um, agreed, actually, um, I've definitely read articles about how they, that is actually how they figure how many prisons to build.
Right?
Yeah.
So scary, so let's fix the root of the problem, instead of keep spending money on building prisons, let's spend money on early childhood literacy programs.
Facts.
Yeah.
Big time, big, big time, and it, and it's true, there's a direct correlation there, oh my god, um, you know, we, we've had, uh, as a former guest on here, um, Dr. Sean Robinson.
Okay, yeah.
And, yeah, you know, that, he lives, yes, Dr. Dyslexia dude, and uh, he lives and breathes this. And uh, he's one of my fraternity brothers, so like, uh, I, I hear this often, so I'm actually interested, where else are we taking this?
This topic of literacy, yeah, I think discussing dyslexia would be wonderful, just helping people understand it better. Um, there's different components of dyslexia, there's also dysgraphia, where a student might be reading, okay, around grade level, but their handwriting and their ability to spell words is severely hampered because of the same kind of um, brain functions that cause dyslexia, so just an ability to process words differently. And students with dysgraphia or dyslexia are absolutely capable of learning to read. They just need to be given different tools to get there.
Right, okay, um, what else? I'm, I'm gonna let you go for a while here, I'm, I'm gonna.
Let's do this.
Yeah, let's do this.
Let's talk about my teaching experience, so as I said, I started at a high school and I, at that first school, gosh, I love it, it still has a piece of my heart. But it was chaotic, I didn't have a lot of support as a teacher, um, I had to go on donorschoose.org to get classroom novels for my students to read, and then halfway through the year, they gave me a different curriculum that was like a reading intervention program. Thinking that my students were struggling with reading, and I got certified in that program. I was all in with it, gave my students the reading tests, gosh, I should be ashamed to admit this. Realized that one of my students actually read at a higher grade level than I did. Um, but she was just hiding that, you know, in the classroom, she just wouldn't participate at the same level as some other kids. And so I, it wasn't till halfway through the year that I was given this new curriculum to assess her, that I realized how incredibly advanced she was in her reading. Um, long story short, the next year I started at tenth grade with that same program, couple weeks in. They said, oh, never mind, now you're gonna teach ninth graders who have just been sitting around, haven't had a teacher for two to three weeks into the school year. And switched me, and all this time, so these two years, I was only observed by a vice principal one time. So I only had one formal observation, which is not an effective way to support teachers. Um, this was at the height of No Child Left Behind, so that school had five years of declining standardized test scores, and so the result was it was turned over into a independent charter school. And with that, they let go of a lot of the staff, I wasn't fired. I was still employed by the same school district, but I just could no longer work at that school as it was transitioning into a charter. And that was really emotional for me, I was only like twenty-five and I felt like I'd done such a good job, why wouldn't they wanna keep me? And one of my coworkers was like, Liz, go get yourself a promotion, go to this middle school across town that was known as the best middle school in the district, and get yourself a job there, on her advice, I was like, alright, alright Linda, I'll do this. And I did, I got a job at, it's the high school, have you ever heard of Warren Buffett, one of the richest guys in the country?
Oh yeah, I know, yeah.
The middle school, it's the middle school he went to, so it's really, I mean, it's DC, so both the schools were very historic, um. The first school, the high school, Paul Lawrence Dunbar was one of the first schools in the country for black students. So it had a rich history, Dill had a rich history also. Um, when I went to this middle school, I was observed five times, uh, twice by people I'd never met, they're called master educators. Three times by three different principals, I was given all the textbooks, all the novels I could need. There were computers in my classroom, the previous school, there wasn't even a computer lab in the school, so when I wanted my students to type up papers, I couldn't take all of them to one place to type up papers. So I share all this to build up this background that what makes the difference in how well a teacher can do for our students is the support that they have in the school building, cause I didn't drastically change over one year time, but at the middle school, I was evaluated based on my students' standardized test scores. And whether or not they showed growth, they all needed, every student needed to show at least a year's worth of growth. So if I had a student like my previous student who read at a second grade level, I didn't need to get them up to a ninth grade level by the end of the year. I just needed to move them up to at least a third grade level. And this was really valuable for me to realize how important, like how high the stakes were, I didn't wanna get shifted in a job again, so of course I wanted to make sure all my students grew by a whole year. And the end result was actually that they grew by more than a whole year. And again, I don't think that's because I was some sort of fabulous teacher that I drastically changed from one school to the next. The difference was that at the second school, I had a lot of support, I collaborated a ton with my col- with my colleagues. We kinda experimented with curriculum, we did a lot of read alouds in some units and read books that were really challenging for eighth graders, like Maya Angelou's, I Know Why the Cage Bird Sings and George Orwell's Animal Farm. Um, those aren't typical middle school books, but we pushed our students to read high school level books. And, and so I saw the result was that they grew by more than a year's worth of reading. You know, students who maybe started at a third or fourth grade level could jump all the way to a sixth grade level. And students who came to me already ahead, like already at a tenth grade level, could by the end of my class, jump up to like eleventh, twelfth grade level. And so this experience just is something that I would like to bring to Oshkosh, you know? I don't think there's anything stopping any of our teachers from being able to have these same results, having their students jump a grade level or more in their reading progress, as long as we are giving them the right support, the right curriculum, the right collaboration with colleagues, all those things that I had at the second school I worked at.
Was there socioeconomic factors between those schools?
There was a difference, yes, um.
Cause I, I, look, I'm a firm believer that there, there's always money in play.
Yeah.
Right, as far as, because part of that is the resources, right, and where they decide to plug in those resources.
Yes.
Um, is huge in how money is spent and, um, yeah, so I, that, when you were saying this, I just had this inkling that there is this huge socio-economic difference between the two places you probably were at.
Yeah, and it was the same school district, but yeah, like I said, the second school, I had MacBooks in my classroom. I was given a classroom teacher computer, the first school, the library had about fourteen computers, that on a good day, like two-thirds of them would work, and that was for the whole school, but the second school, every classroom had. And every level, it was a three-story school, every level, every floor had a computer lab. The library also had a computer lab, so there were four computer labs, there was, um, a rolling cart of laptops that you could reserve, the building was remodeled really well, I had a smartboard. Um, at the first school I had, I didn't actually even have walls on my classroom, it was an open concept school.
Ooh.
Yeah, so huge difference in what sort of resources were being put into the two different schools. Which again is what made me a different teacher, I wasn't a bad teacher at the first school, I just wasn't given the support I needed to be as good as I could have been.
Resources matter.
Yeah.
You know, um, you can be a great teacher and not have any resources and then that's going to just make you a subpar teacher.
Yeah.
The resources matter.
Definitely.
Okay, um, I'm gonna come back to the well one more time.
Yeah.
And ask you what else.
What else?
Well, yeah, that, well, there's another, okay, I'm gonna take this in another direction after this and, and I'll tell you what. And I'll tell you what the question is now.
Okay.
Um, how does this tie in to you wanting to continue on the school board?
Exactly.
Or how does this tie into you ever wanting to be on the school board, you know, um, so we can go either way. We can go another, what else?
Yeah, right when you said, well, what more, I even was already gonna hit right there, so, I'm ready for this. Um, before I ran for the school board the first time, I went to meetings for about a year and just sat in the back corner. I made sure that like I wasn't on the TV and I would come right as it started and leave right as it ended. I'm not great at networking, so that, that isn't great when you're a local politician, but.
What? No shit, wait, you're not, you're not out here shaking those hands? What? No shit? Wait, you're not, you're not out here shaking those hands and kissing those babies?
No, I don't have any pictures of me kissing babies, my own, I guess. But anyway, at this time, there was a group of moms who were speaking up because their students had dyslexia. This is when I learned about Dr. Sean Brown. Wait, not Brown, I just said his name wrong. Uh, Robinson.
John, Dr. Robinson, yes.
Um, and I'm the kind of person who, I'm, I can be really opinionated. I was voted the most opinionated person. No, the most outspoken person. And you know, your senior year, when your class gives everyone awards, that's what I got in the yearbook.
Were you that girl?
Yeah, I was that girl. Um, so I can be really opinionated, but I'm also really slow to develop these opinions. So I listened to these parents. Um, gosh, if some of them listen to this, they'll probably agree and maybe even be a little upset that it took me so long. But I really wanted to listen to what they were saying, listen to what the district was saying, look at the data. Um, talk to teachers about our curriculum, watch my own students use the curriculum. And it took me a while to form my opinion on what steps needed to be taken next. But all this gets to actually, is it two weeks from now, Friday, March 4th, the education committee will be reviewing our literacy curriculum. We've had an outside group come in and do like a study on it. And at that March 4th education committee meeting, we are going to review the results of that study.
Okay.
So I have a feeling about what some of those results might be. Um, I believe we could do better by our students and by our teachers. Give our students, our teachers a stronger curriculum that gives them more support. Give our students a curriculum that's more structured, more sequential into how they should learn to read. Um, that's where I would love to see this go, but I, I know government is slow and there's processes that you have to go through. So to me, I see this education committee review of our literacy program as the next step in the process and I'm excited for it.
Yes. Uh, well, government is definitely uh slow.
Yeah.
But it is intentionally that way. At least I have come to learn that. And I do actually appreciate the fact that it is slow because um, to me, if it's to be built through government or has to be, it needs to be built the last. And uh for that to happen, it does have to be built with a lot of thought behind it and research and, and voices and opinions.
Yeah.
Um, and that takes time.
It does.
That just takes time. It doesn't, it doesn't happen. If it happens too quickly, what, what that tells me is that whatever's being built is probably a siloed opinion of a few and not of the many. And then it's not made for all of us.
Yeah.
That's, that's my thought process when I, when I see things move too quickly.
And you have to get the key stakeholders on board. I mean, you have to get teacher buy-in. I know the first time that I ran for school board and literacy was an issue then because of this group of moms that was thankfully kind of raising their voice about it. I also knew that the literacy program we had at that time was only like one or two years old. And I knew as a teacher that had my curriculum changed on me mid-year. But that's not the most effective way to handle curriculum. You gotta let it go for a couple of years, look at the data. See if it's improving. When we look at our math curriculum, at the elementary level, we can see that. We can see that once we implemented it every year, we saw growth and better outcomes. When we look at our reading curriculum, it's pretty steady. We haven't seen the same kind of growth that we see in our math curriculum.
Okay. I'm gonna say this, you know what I appreciate about this conversation? Because this conversation is about the learning. Um, and it's not about money or other factors that people want to add into the educational part. Um, and I just sometimes think that people don't actually think about how ed- education and education systems and a school district plays into the economy of a, of a local municipality, um, in the sense of when a business looks for a new place to build a substantial business, the first thing they look at is a school district because they know to draw talent, they have to have a great one.
Yeah.
A school district is what keeps retention wise, great talent. Cause if your school district isn't strong, people move when they have families.
Yep.
They move them to other school districts. It's not a money thing. It's a curriculum thing. Now, we need money for curriculum, but um, it's, it's not for the, for the things, the conversations that center around price savings and stuff like that, like those should never come into play because education always makes money in the long run for the community.
Right? It's a huge impact on the economy.
Huge
Yeah.
impact on the economy. So um, it's just something I thought about, um, cause I, I feel like that comes, that conversation comes into play a little too much sometimes. And you have people who, um, I'm a person that just doesn't believe you, you can't run things that are about serving people like a business.
No.
Uh, because they, the, a business's purpose is to make money.
Yeah.
Is to be profitable, right? And that's its point. A school's job, that is not a school's job, that is not a school district's job unless that profit is knowledge
Yeah.
to our youth. Then that fits. So that, that is just something that, um, I think when we have these conversations, that's just something to always keep in mind as we're trying to do the best thing for our region.
Yeah. And you look at, you know, this brings me back to how we started this conversation about instead of investing the money on building prisons, invest the money on making sure those literacy scores start out strong, those literacy foundation skills start out strong.
Right.
That's how you save money with valuable education.
Yeah. And, and it's something that I, if I am correct, um, it's something that's shown in the long term because like that it's not just something that affects you in pre-K or kindergarten or first or, or, or elementary school. It affects you when you're an adult because whatever that foundation is, a lot of times carries on all the way through into your adulthood.
Yeah.
And it, it, there's a direct correlation sometimes with how um, the careers you find or, or the paths that you end up choosing.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
I know. I'm really passionate about this. That's why I said, I know the conversation about literacy could go a bunch of different places because it does impact so many things.
It really does. Right? Uh, being able to comprehend, read, um, it just it makes such a, it's, it's huge.
Yeah.
And even the way, um, the way that we read things now. Even though, um, I'm not gonna lie, I've transferred from reading like long books and stuff like that to reading articles.
Yes, I have too. I'm right there with you.
I love a good article. Give me four to five, six pages of really good stuff and data and uh, yeah. I can do that, but to try to sit down and actually do like 200 pages of something like, uh, yeah, I just don't know if I'm built for it anymore.
Yeah, right? Too many interruptions. That's what I realized. Cause I mean, I was an English major, so I'd read thousand page novels. Once I had kids, give me an article. Yeah. I've only got 12 minutes, I can invest in this.
Yes. Okay. Um, anything else you'd like to share?
About literacy? Well, yes.
Uh, literacy or school board or anything.
Yeah, I was gonna connect the two that you'd mentioned, you know, how this fits in with my reelection campaign. And I know that the district is headed in this direction of improving literacy. It's something that's important to our new superintendent, Dr. Brian Davis. So I know whether, you know, win or lose, the work will continue to go on. But I want to say this as humble as I can, but I really feel like the four years of watching school board meetings, you know, hearing from that mom group, looking at the data, now having this upcoming education committee meeting. And my own experience as a teacher, like when you combine all of that, for me, it just feels so important for me to be able to stay and see this through. And continue working on this project of improving our students' literacy outcomes.
You're vested.
Yes, I'm super vested. So I'm hoping the voters will see that and, you know, support me, but we'll see. Find out in April.
Uh, Kosh listeners, I just want you to know if you could have saw the fire in Liz's eyes when she said that, she's in this. She is very much in this and that's, that's pretty cool. Cause um, passion matters.
Yeah, the education's definitely my passion. I can't get away from it. Teacher, school board member, school counselor, like
Right?
All the work I've done as an adult has to be connected to education.
Okay. Alright, well, this is that time of the show. Where we start wrapping up.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, thank you, thank you, uh, for taking your time and um, listening to us here at the Kosh. Um, once again, we are a work in progress. Um, always feel free to reach out to us. Uh, we have a new website if you didn't know. Um, that is the koshpodcast.com. Uh, that is the koshpodcast.com. You can go find all our episodes there. Uh, please don't beat us up too bad because we are still very much creating it, but it is published, it's out there and you can connect with it. And okay, Kosh listeners, you know what I need? I need feedback. I need y'all to get out here and start sending some feedback as far as like on uh, Apple iTunes or wherever, or even on the website itself. Um, so people can understand, hey, I like the Kosh, I don't like the Kosh, that's what I value about it. You know, we just want to make that happen. Um, the other thing is this, you know, I've been trying to roll out this new segment called Ask the Kosh. So I have this phone number. I need voicemails. You can also leave a voicemail on the actual website too, but uh, that phone number is nine two zero three eight five nine two nine eight. Once again, that's nine two zero three eight five nine two nine eight. I need a good question or two that we can, uh, me and the guest of that week can talk about and talk through. So I'm excited to make that happen. So uh, send us your questions. Alright? Um, Liz, how are you feeling?
Good. I got a good experience.
Like that? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, please do not forget also, email us at askthakosh@gmail.com. Once again, askthakosh@gmail.com. Alright, um, you know what I believe? It is, um, it is that time of the show and I'm telling you what I'm trying to do right now is I'm trying to get my sounds right. It is shout out time. That was a lot. I was pressing buttons. I was making things happen. I'm very transparent, transparent about the show. I just tell, tell our listeners exactly what's happening.
You narrated your movements.
Yeah, I just tell them what's really going on. Okay, it is my favorite time of the show. It is shout out time. Liz, what are your shout outs?
Yeah, my shout outs would be the League of Women Voters. They hold awesome forums to help voters be um, informed. And also the local newspapers.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm big on the League of Women Voters. They go hard. They are vested. Like they're, they're super vested, they're involved. Um, anybody else?
Yeah, like, uh, I don't know if you caught the part about the local newspapers because they help voters be informed. The other one I wrote down and maybe this is I'm trying to get a little extra credit if any of my professors are listening, but yeah, just the professors at the UWO Professional Counseling Program.
Oh no, that's a good group.
Yeah, it's been great getting, getting to know them.
Ah, alright. Well, like I said, I, I, I do know a little somebody over in that group. Uh, my shout out will go to Renee over there. How you doing? And uh, yeah, okay. Uh, my shout outs of the week, um, shout out of the weeks go to um, Alpha Phi Alpha, the Sigma Epsilon chapter, which is the of Brown County through uh, Winnebago County chapter. Uh, that is my fraternity. Um, we've been doing some really cool things. Um, we're coming up on uh, two years of uh, anniversary here. And I just want to send a shout out to all the, the brothers out there. I appreciate you and all the hard work we're doing. We're trying to really make a difference in the Fox Cities area, um, with some of the things. So you're gonna see cool things coming down the pipeline um, here and you will start seeing our presence in places. So that's gonna be really cool. Um, shout out to the Fox Cities Foundation. Um, I had an opportunity to actually go sit on someone else's podcast this week. Uh, which is actually the Fox Cities Foundation. So I got to be a guest on that. And that, I don't know if people really understand the things that they do and the reach they have. But that is a fabulous, fabulous organization, helping to support um, important initiatives to increasing the community and um, our nonprofits out there who are doing amazing work for the greater good of our community. So I really, really appreciate them. Um, I'd like to send a shout out to Colleen Bies of the Women's Business Initiative Corporation. Uh, I got to meet Colleen this week. We had this amazing conversation. Um, A, she's a Titan, uh, B, she's a veteran, um, C, she's just, uh, she's brilliant. And yeah, sometimes when you meet brilliant people, it is what it is, right? Gotta love that. And then my last shout out goes to, and I did a lot of shout outs this week, but that happens sometimes. Um, to everyone working in our public health departments in our counties and our cities. Um, I don't think people truly appreciate, um, all of the work that they've had to do as far as, um, all the stuff surrounding COVID and clinics and vaccinations and stuff, like our public health departments have been stretched, um, very much so. So um, it's just, I just want to send a shout out to them. I, you know, now that I kind of work in this new environment, um, I get to see what they really have to do, um, all the different things, particularly during this time of pandemic, like they've been worn thin. I don't think people have truly appreciated all they've had to do for our communities to, to help, um, keep us safe. Alright. You sure you don't have any more uh, shout outs there, Liz?
No. I'm looking, there is one thing that I do want to say. So here, I'll move it. I don't know how many people in Oshkosh know about our Riverside Fox Valley Tech campus. It's one of, it's one of our high schools that's not as well-known. And I would just give a shout out to them, that the educators there, even though I already shouted out educators, but educators there really do special work.
Oh yeah. Definitely a shout out to Fox Valley Tech. They do, they are amazing. Okay. Last segment, we're parting words of wisdom. What do you have for us?
Yeah. So the first thing that came to my mind is just what's been one of my favorite motivational quotes since I was probably about 10. And that is that it's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice.
Facts. That is so good.
Right?
Simple, but just, it is what it is, to the point. The Kosh.